Call this meeting to order. The selectmen's meeting for July 29th. First order on the agenda is a salute to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
Signing of our warrants. Okay, actually, under old business, I'm going to just quickly announce that we just signed a release of the remaining $11,000 for the Acton-Shapley Youth Conservation Corps. We had an influx of...
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars from the school's audit, money that they had left over this year because of some excellent financial management from the behalf of their superintendent. So that eighty thousand has swept back into the general fund here at the town, and so we were able to release those funds to the ASYCC. So, there is no old business. Under new business, we have a lease to be signed between the fire department, or the town in this case, and the Acton Ambulance Association that will allow the ambulance to be housed in the fire station. It's a request of the fire and rescue departments and of the Acton Ambulance Association. When there is an emergency call, they feel that they can respond more quickly if both, if all of the apparatus and equipment is in the same building. But in order to do that, we need to have a lease that allows that, because the ambulance is privately owned, we have to have a lease that allows the ambulance to be in the building so that we are not liable. So, make...
Yeah, so this is just a pretty common lease, and actually Wells is doing the same thing, so the attorneys that we used had already done this for Wells. We need to have somebody from the ambulance, are you on the ambulance too?
No, I'm on the ambulance association, but I don't feel as though I should sign the lease.
No, and...
Mike Conway is the president.
He will be back next week, yeah.
Yeah, he'll be back to sign the lease.
Okay.
So, I figured if you wanted to go ahead and do your part tonight, if you wish to, or if not, you can wait till next week.
Yeah, no, we're gonna sign it, and then we'll have it in with Jennifer so he can come in and sign it when he gets back, and we also need the insurance binder showing that...
Okay, you haven't gotten that yet?
I haven't gotten it, no.
I'll double check on that tomorrow.
Okay.
We're having Jennifer witness it, because then she'll have witnessed us sign it, and she can witness Mike Conway sign it, so that will be...
Did you get a insurance policy from the ambulance company yet?
No.
A binder, okay.
He's on vacation.
Okay, no, we didn't get the binder yet.
Okay, I'll tell them later, I'll just warn Jennifer.
So I guess that means I can't get the dollar from you? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda is an announcement about a special town meeting that will be taking place to correct an error in our warrant in June. We, on our warrant, when we wrote it, the article to allow for the revaluation of the town, we did not run it by our attorney first, and we therefore did not include a treasurer's statement as was required by law in order for us to borrow funds. We cannot therefore get a loan from the bank because we do not have that statement. So, we will be holding a special town meeting. Ted's gonna read the opinion of our lawyer. Before he does so, I just want to give the public my apology. I am sorry that we are having to host this, to hold this. I am embarrassed as well. I should have had it checked with the attorney, and I did not do so. So I apologize for that. It will not happen again, I assure you. Our warrant from now on will run through our attorney before it runs into the town meeting. And so, I do apologize for the inconvenience and the modest expense of another town meeting. I do hope that the public will come out and support this revaluation the way that they did in June. I think it is important. Our revaluation company, the O'Donnells, are understanding, and they're still going forward the process, and they are allowing us to have the time to get things done legally so that we can get the loan in place, and please do come out and support that again. But, leave the opinion.
Okay, the article, Article 1, choose a moderator for said meeting, this is gonna be on the ninth at the Acton School, to see if the town will appropriate a sum not to exceed $260,000 for the purposes of funding a townwide reevaluation. Two, authorize the treasurer and a majority of the board of selectmen to issue general obligation securities in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $260,000 to fund said appropriation. Three, raise and appropriate a sum not to exceed $55,383.72 for the first year's payment on said general obligation securities, and delegate the treasurer and a majority of the board of selectmen authority to negotiate all necessary terms and conditions and to exceed all required documentation, documents, so long as the term of the obligation does not exceed five years and the annual rate of interest does not exceed 2.47. What happened was the original loan was approved, and then it lapsed because it was given to us for 30 days. So then I got them to agree to continue with the same interest rate, but then they gave us the paperwork that we had to send to our attorney, and our attorney had to write an opinion letter that, yes, the town of Acton had authorized the selectmen to borrow this money, and the attorneys could not do that unless we had this article written the way that I just read to you. And their opinion just quotes the law, and so this will be posted tomorrow, and it just shows exactly how much we owe now, what we have for obligations within the town, so that when you agree to do this, you already, you know how many payments we have out and how many loans we have out, and we're not borrowing more money without you knowing. So the only outstanding and unpaid loans we have are $171,084.38. That's the last payment on the Acton School, which will be paid in November. At that time, the town has no debt unless we take on this new debt.
Which we do hope, which we do hope that we will do. And, as Ted said, the town meeting will be Monday, August 9th, at the Acton Elementary School at 7:00. Mr. Hodgson, if you have a question, will you please come forward?
Will that, will that be handled in conjunction with the voting on the new selectmen?
No.
No, this is a special town meeting just for this one article so that we can go ahead with the reevaluation. Right now, we can't borrow the money.
How much time are you saving?
We...
I'm sorry?
What is the difference in the time from the time you scheduled this meeting until the one where we have a special town meeting to elect the new selectmen?
Mr. Hodgson, it would be a total of eight days, but I don't see that we save any money. We can't hold a special town meeting on Tuesday, the 17th, because people will be voting from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I see what you're asking. This is not a ballot question, this is a town meeting question, so we have to do it in an open forum at town meeting. We can't do this, we can't put this on the ballot on the day of the selectmen and say, "Do you vote for this?" We have to do it as a special town meeting, is what they told us.
You can't hold that meeting on the same day.
No, because people will be voting.
Well, it wouldn't save any money. I mean, it doesn't matter, it wouldn't save any money because we have to have the actual town meeting to vote on this, and the election's already happening, and that's just a ballot, everybody comes in and votes on that one item. But we can't put the two of them together and save money if that's what your question is.
Well, it's gonna cost us $1,500 for eight days.
No, not at all.
No, no, that's not the case.
A special town meeting, it will cost us very little. We will simply have to have, I believe, two ballot clerks that are paid, I believe, $8 an hour, and it should only be about an hour-long meeting at the most. So we are looking at a cost of, what, $16 plus the posting fee, and it is not a ballot question, as Ted said, so it has to be done in town meeting format, and if we were to hold it on the 17th, Jennifer can't be here and at the school at the same time. So we need, they are, and there's, one, this is a town meeting format, you will come and get your little, you know, neon index card and vote, just like we did back in, on June 12th.
And the other thing is, once this is voted in, there's still a lot of time before we can get this reevaluation done, and we're trying to get them started so that they can get to the summer people while they're here, so, because we still have to have, after this is voted in, and the attorneys have to write up a letter that goes back to the bank, then we have to produce the money, I mean, the loan papers, then we have to sign those at a, at a public meeting, and then the bank will give us the money, then we can pay the contractor that we've chosen, but until all this happens, we can't even start the reevaluation, and we want to get that going as soon as possible.
Because in order to start the revale, we need to have, I believe it's a 10% down, and 10% is going, actually, will be $21,000, and we are not allowed to spend more than $15,000 even with the agreement of the warrant and finance committee. So, our hands are tied financially with our revaluation company until we can get through the town meeting. That's why we spoke to MMA, we only have to have it posted for seven days prior for a special town meeting. We will be posting it as of tomorrow, so that's well within the seven-day window, and that is what's going on. So I'll take a motion to sign this.
Make a motion, we sign the special town meeting warrant.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, the next thing is another bit of housekeeping. It is an addendum to the warrant that we posted for August 17th. We failed to write on that warrant 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. voting times, and we are required to do so. So it doesn't change the date of the vote, we simply have to formally announce that it's from 8:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. and have a warrant that says that on it. So, please bear with us with our secretarial technical difficulties. Make them...
I make a motion, we sign the addendum to our original warrant.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye. We didn't put the start time of voting? You had to have 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., it wasn't put on the warrant?
We're told about the actual word.
Oh.
It is, addendum is an actual word, okay? So, this is what I'm told by the legal minds that write these things, so please check it out when you get home, online. See what... We have been learning a lot this week about warrant writing, et cetera. I think it might have been Mr. Neal that said, "The best thing I could do for the town was to learn to write a warrant," and I assure you that this has been teaching that lesson very clearly, and one of the things I hope to take classes with the MMA this year on is warrant writing, and we certainly will make use of our attorney in the future to make sure that we do not run into this again. Any other business?
And, same old question.
Yep.
Do you have an estimated fund balance?
I am ready for you. No, we do not, and here is why. According to Bruce Nuttow, he is our, the man that works for RHR Smith, he's our auditor, he says that, "I need guidance on the designated surplus, there are a few other items as well. I won't be available tonight, but can I touch base with you in the morning? My apologies about the fund balance, but without having the designated balances nailed down, I couldn't calculate a good number." So, we are still waiting for the auditor. We are not concerned, though, because we don't need to know the undesigned fund balance until we go to commitment, and we are not looking to go to commitment until the end of August.
Right, I wasn't looking for the actual audit, I just understand, until the audit's done, you don't have an actual number, I was just looking for an estimated number.
They are not willing to give us an estimate.
They just finished the school yesterday, and that's why we found out about that money from the school, but they haven't finished in here yet. They, I think they're coming back next week.
Okay. And, what was your findings on the question I had last week about the FEMA money?
That the FEMA, we agreed that the FEMA money will be going back into the departments that were charged, the treasurer said that she has been moving the cost of repairs from that, the individual departments, and that the money will be going back to replace the monies that were spent. That is my understanding from our treasurer.
But that isn't how the town meeting voted. That's the problem, Article 7.
I think Sherry Smith is coming to answer your question.
Okay.
I went back in and looked at the warrant, and yes, he was right, that it's, it states that it's supposed to come from undesigned funds. However, it was paid out of an expense account in the fire department's line, which it did not go out, they didn't go over balance by that point, by that much, so it actually did go back into the undesigned fund. The money can go back into the undesigned fund, because it would have gone, they would have not, if they had not spent that money, that money would have gone to the undesigned fund when the year ended. So if we take the money and put it back into the undesigned fund at the end of, when we get it, then that balances it out.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you rectify that in the, in the future. Really, I, I can't, you cannot actually write a check out of undesigned funds, that doesn't work for the audit, I'm not sure how you go about doing that.
Okay.
So, it was paid out of the expense lines, just because it was in a salary expense, but if they had not spent it, that money would have gone back into the undesigned fund.
So we need to speak to Ron and find out how we go about in the future accommodating our warrant?
Correct.
Or look forward to next year, writing the warrant in such a way to accommodate how we pay things.
Correct.
This money is from three years ago, and all we got was a notification we were getting it, so we haven't actually even gotten the money yet.
Oh, I was talking about money for this year?
Oh, yeah.
This, this year that we were in, that...
Right, we haven't gotten, we haven't even gotten any notice of what we're getting yet on this year, because like I said, the money we just got for the fire department was from FEMA for three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
So, we haven't got any notification?
We haven't got any notification of, of what we're getting for this year, for anything.
This past year.
Right, this past year.
Okay.
They just contacted us, asking for estimates on what FEMA damage, what money we can ask for from FEMA for March and April of 2010. So they're still, they're catching up for our fiscal year 09-10 now, we have not received monies back.
There was a second emergency made for later in the winter, so they're just asking us for that information now. So the one that you did, we haven't gotten any money for that, and then this is a new one that we're sending them more information. So there's actually two emergencies this year that we have claims for.
We had another one since July, you mean?
Well, no, another one after the one that you did, that was like February, March, April? Then there was another one that came in for, for in that same period of time, but it went a little bit further.
Right.
So they're asking for us to send that information in now, so both the road commissioners have been giving us stuff and are getting ready to give us stuff, so. So there was actually two emergencies this year that we have reimbursable fees.
Right, I knew that, yeah, I knew that.
But yeah, no, we haven't got any notification of how much they're gonna give us for any money at all, yet.
Oh, okay, because Lorraine had said a few weeks ago that, you know, you had that notification.
That was for the fire department for three years ago.
That was from three years ago, not this year.
It was $15,000 from three years ago.
That was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, so it was just a letter saying that we are gonna get this amount, but we haven't got the money yet. But, no, it's good to clarify before the money comes in, so we figure out exactly what we should do with it, so, no, no, it's good to clarify.
No, I mean, I'm not, you know, money goes where it goes, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that's all.
Yeah, I wish FEMA paid you in the same year.
The other thing is, and I've got no issue at all with, given the miles from Lake, the other $11,000, but my only concern is that the $80,000 that was unexpected from the school...
Right.
The school funds has to stay with the school, and it can't be used for municipal expenses.
Right.
So I guess I don't quite understand the relevance.
We're just doing it as far as cash flow, because we, when we were looking at it before, because I just came in, I wanted to know how much money we had in order to get us until October 15th, when taxes come in. So that's when we talked to the auditor, and he said, "Looking at what you have, then you're okay to do the 11, you know, the half, but don't do the full right now because you'd just be hurting yourselves, you wouldn't have enough money to make it until we start getting tax dollars." But at that time, he was looking at $80,000 that was gonna be spent by the school because he, you know, that money was already in the school budget.
Right.
So the money's in, in the undesigned fund, so now we know we have $80,000 more, so he said it was okay to go ahead and pay the other part, because, you know, you're looking at, you know, say we had $100,000, so before we only had $20,000 to spend, now there's $100,000 in there. But we're not actually taking school funds and paying this, we're just making sure we have enough cash flow to pay all of our bills until we start getting taxed dollars.
Okay, that was my concern.
Yeah. No, 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 we're not using school money, school money to pay for the town, for the, for that association.
And the other question I would have is, tonight you signed a warrant for a special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Have you met with the warrant finance committee on it yet?
We offered, we told them that we had to do it this week in order to get the date in, and we called them up and asked them to have a meeting, and so what was put on is, warrant and finance committee at this time has not made a recommendation, so if they want to meet next week before the town meeting and make a recommendation, then they could do it. We just didn't have enough time. In order to get it posted by tomorrow, to have it within seven days, the warrant and finance committee never got back to us on when they were gonna have a meeting, but they still can have a meeting and make their recommendation on this.
I emailed Debbie on Tuesday, I believe, when we find out from MMA...
That's when we get the attorney's letters.
...what we could do and what time period, and I let her know, because she is still the chair of the warrant and finance committee until such time as they reconvene and elect a new chair. So I emailed her, and I said, "This is what's happened, we are going to need to, if you wish to have a recommendation on this warrant, you will need to have, convene a meeting this week and get it to us by the end of the week. The warrant needs to be posted no later than Monday," and I have not heard back from her.
I guess my only problem was by ordinance, that they're supposed to make a recommendation.
They are not, I will have to look at that ordinance, Dennis, because I think if they are asked to make a recommendation and they choose not to, that there's no, I don't believe our ordinance requires their recommendation on the warrant, but I will look into that.
I guess my problem is just that the chairman can't really just make that decision on that.
The chairman can convene the meeting, which is what she was asked to do. Please convene a meeting this week, if you wish to have a recommendation as a board put forward on this.
Before we post it tomorrow.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
It's not her choice whether to convene a meeting, it kind of, she's the chair, and that is the proper protocol for us to follow, is for us, as our board, to contact their board through their chair, let them know what is happening, and allow them the opportunity to convene if they wish. And if she doesn't wish to forward that to her other board members, that is not our responsibility.
I don't want to come across as this is a criticism, okay? It's a...
I hear what you're saying, Dennis, but if they decide, if they didn't have a meeting before, you know, tonight, then we can't put their opinion on, but they can still have a meeting before the special town meeting and give their opinion, and we can put it right onto the website and right onto the cable channel as soon as they tell us what their opinion is.
Right.
And it's not, they gave a recommendation for last warrant of ought to pass unanimously for the same article minus the treasurer's report, so it's not a, a brand-new idea if...
No, I appreciate that, it's just that, it always has been the selectmen's responsibility when it comes to the warrant finance committee to call an organizational meeting for the first, for the beginning of the year, and because of, selectmen are part of the warrant finance committee by ordinance. And normally, the procedure is that the selectmen call the very beginning of July or thereabout, meeting with the warrant finance committee, so they can elect their officers and things like this, and that's normally how it's done with the warrant finance committee.
Our warrant finance committee chair emailed us a couple of weeks ago, said that she was looking to convene a meeting, and could we get her her new contact information? So I think that perhaps there is a disagreement about how the warrant finance committee holds its first meeting of the fiscal year.
That's true, but as of July 1st, they have no more chair, because if it had been a different election, for example, if Debbie Ricks's turn had been out, for example, then she wouldn't be the chair, I mean, the new person wouldn't automatically be the chair. You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
And that's why the warrant finance committee is, is always historically operated that way. That's all.
Okay.
Any other business? Mr. Moore?
John Moore, I heard a name mentioned about someone, Brian or something like that, is gonna be the assessor company?
The O'Donnells.
O'Donnell?
O'Donnell, O'Donnell.
That is a company where, from Massachusetts?
No, it is from, in Maine.
Okay, okay, it doesn't matter where he's from.
Maine?
Are they gonna use the Trio system?
No, they are not.
Then we're gonna be right back where we started.
We have had this conversation at length. The O'Donnells come, and it was our intention going in to use Trio. We asked all of the bidders to bid us a price using the Trio system. O'Donnells gave us a bid price using Trio or using their own software. During our interviews with all of the different companies, we talked about the benefits and the negatives to using Trio, and certainly the benefit was to not find ourselves in the same position we are now with Brightside. The O'Donnell software offers us options that Trio does not, and in looking at the history of the Trio assessing program only, it is not a program that they are maintaining right now. They're not, they're, they're providing service on it, but they're not improving it in any way, and they have not added anything to it in the last four years. They, the market for assessment, from what we were able to discern from the different people bidding, is that more and more municipalities are going with either Vision, which brings their own software package, a company like O'Donnells, which brings their own software package, and that they are purchasing interfaces with Trio. So the problem with Brightside is that we had no way to communicate, have Brightside communicate with Trio. That is not an issue now. The O'Donnell software program will come with an interface built in, so that when they put values and figures into their calculating software, it will immediately transfer the data into our Trio billing software. We are staying with Trio for all other, for all other municipal computer programming needs, but with the assessing program, O'Donnell's allows us to do things that Trio did not, and we thought it was a better choice for the town. It also came in at $212,000, which is a considerable savings over some of the other bids, and we feel good about this company. They are, the assessing, they did the revale and continue to do assessing work for Shapley and for a number of the other lake communities in the area, and we thought that with as much lake experience, that this was a good thing for our town.
The other thing is, is everything's gonna be available online, so if you want to go, once we have it put into their software, they maintain it, so if you want to look up a lot and map number, you're gonna go, click on that, you're gonna see the picture of the house, you're gonna see the last time that the assessor visited, what the notes are and everything else, so everything will be available to everybody, which may, and will probably end up saving us a lot of time here at town hall, when real estate agents and brokers and things like that are looking for information, they don't have to come here anymore, they can just go online and get everything that they need on every, every property in the town.
Very good.
Yeah.
I noticed you haven't corrected the electrical deficiency in the town home.
As I told you, it's grandfathered. I will get a plate for that.
Any other business? Barbara Seeker.
Is that the only one?
Two pieces of business. The first is, coming Tuesday is going to be candidate night, and everybody beware that there is the possibility of a write-in candidate, so if you, your person is gonna write in, then the opposition needs to show up. The second one is the town picnic on Saturday, next Saturday, the 7th, and if the weather holds, our most senior citizen, Helen Wentworth, will be there.
Excellent.
And she's 105 years old, so I think it would be very nice if we could find a red poppet to usher her in.
And she's our current Boston cane...
Yes.
Yes.
She doesn't have the cane with her, because she's afraid somebody will steal it, so it's someplace...
It's at the library.
Thank you.
I believe, isn't it? Any other business?
I just have one thing, I want to thank the school board and Andy Brazier for coming up and cleaning all the rugs in the, in the selectmen's office. They allowed us to use their steam cleaner, and then Andy actually came up on a Saturday with me and steam cleaned all the rugs, so it was nice to not have to go out and rent one and, or pay somebody to come in and do that, so I wanted to thank them for doing that.
Okay. Another couple of announcements, there will be no board meeting next week, August 5th. Our next board meeting will be on August 12th. There will also not be a meeting on August 19th, but we will be meeting on August 26th. Second notice is that lien notices have been sent out, they were mailed today. Our town report also will be being printed in September. All department heads have been, and committee chairs have been sent notices requesting their town reports for fiscal year 09-10. If you haven't received yours yet, Mr. Vannell, I'm sure it's in the mail, and those are due back no later than August 31st, if you wish to be included in the town report, and there will be follow-up phone calls to nudge you gently in that direction. Because the town report will be being printed in September, and lien notices have been sent out, anyone not wishing to be listed as having their property taxes leaned must have their '08 taxes paid in full by August 20th. have their '08 taxes paid in full by August 20th. I realize that that's earlier than usual, but we are hoping to get the town report out in as timely a manner as possible. So, August 20th is the date to get those taxes in if you do not wish to be listed as being leaned. Last bit of announcement is that, we announced a few weeks ago about a policy committee. We've had two people express interest. We could certainly, we can't have a committee without at least five of you. We would like to have seven, but if five is what we have, five is what we have. So, anyone who is interested in being part of a policy committee that would review existing town policies, and it's simply an advisory committee, it would not have any sort of voting authority, um, but if you're interested, please do put in a note of interest to Lorraine.
To help you to, um, do this, the MMA has almost every policy you can imagine. They've already written it up. All we need to do is adjust these policies, uh, to fit the town of Acton. So, it's not a lot of, uh, recreating the wheel. You can just come in and take these policies and see how, what we need in town and how they fit the town. And, um, then the, any other ones that have been in effect for the last 15, 20 years that need to be updated, we also want you to take a look and do that. If we were a larger, uh, committee, we could have, we could break off and have two selectmen do this like they do with the school committee, where they have five and they have two break off and do policy committee, and two break off and do something else. But because with a board of only three of us, we can't have a policy committee, because then we have, uh, quorum. So, that's why we're trying to get some people from town to get involved and help us get this policy book set up. Because then, once we have a policy book, we stick to it, then everybody is treated the same, and it'll be a lot easier for things to work out that way.
Anything else? Oh, Mr. Hodgson.
I just wanna note, in fact, that we've got a safety issue that needs to be attended to on the H Road. Uh, we've got washouts on the edge of the pavement. Some of them are quite deep, and such a chance for somebody to get hurt pretty bad. If you went off there on your bike, you wouldn't stop rolling for a month.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.